Good evening, everyone. Before I call this meeting to order, I'm going to call on Commissioner Pittman for invocation.
Listening. Great God, our Father, we rejoice in you. We thank you for all your goodness to us, especially to give your Son Jesus die for us, and to give us a hope of eternal life. Lord, pray that tonight your Spirit be in control here. Lord, that we may behave as we should, speak as we should, tell the truth, and do what's right in your sight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. I'll call to order the March 10, 2025 Commissioners Work Mission Meeting. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And if everyone will notice, there are changes on page three. So I will entertain.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One carries. All right. Next item on our agenda is Board Commissioners' appointments to boards and committees. I believe everyone had an opportunity to read that, the applications emailed to each of the commissioners. Do I have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, move on to 4.2. And this is the Cabarrus High School roof replacement. And we have Phil Penn from the Cabarrus County School System here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Chuck Taylor is here to join me as well to talk about the Central Cabarrus High School replacement. We appreciate your time to be with you here today. While she's up the presentation, just kind of go through executive summary, sort of where we are. We've gone through multiple rounds of sealed bids for this project. And to reap the roof at this point has exceeded the sealed builds up to this point. So we're proposing as a funding approach that will allow the project to be done in a way that will last the county additional funds we have already been committed. So I'm going to let Ms. Taylor talk through sort of how this has become possible now, and it take you through bid history that we've experienced so far.
Ms. Taylor, I didn't recognize you as coming up. You're Chuck Taylor, and what is your title?
I am Director of Facilities for Cabarrus County Schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me a chance to speak to this. I won't read everything that's up there to summarize. So far, we've tracked $26,000 in repairs due to the leaking roof, or 36 work orders. Now, to what extent, I can't tell you tonight. We won't know until we pull that membrane off. But it is absolutely vital that we get this roof replaced. So as the slide shows, we have bid this three times. When we received the money back in '22, you see it came in at $3,202,280. That was the low bid. We expected it to come in at around 1.2 at the time we projected it. Now, remember, we projected that in '21, a full year ahead of when we actually received funding and were able to start design work. It wasn't until the design work we started getting any inclination. Because of the complexity of the building, the number of different additions, there's basically an addition there from every decade, the way it's tied together, the materials used in those decades, starting in the '60s, there are some hazardous materials that have to be remediated. That's what's driving this cost. That, everything that happened with COVID, years before, we would have never seen this kind of cost. But since COVID, all the supply chain issues, the lack of skilled workforce, that's what's driving this cost. And we bid it three times. As you can see, the last time it came in, just a little bit less. And we just can't wait any longer. We have negotiated the price down with the contractor to $2,568, or $68,920. I don't think we're going to get a better price anytime soon. I just don't think we have the time to wait.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. So what you can see here on the next slide is the cost estimate that Mr. Taylor just mentioned, coming in at just below $2.6 million. The project funding that exists for this is about $1.1 million as of today. The funding gap is $1.4 million overall. So how do we plan to address that $1.4 million? So what you see here is a list of different projects that have actually developed favorably as we've been out there actually getting actual quotes for these projects, putting together purchase orders, and starting to get some of the work done. I believe there's seven of them. One of these projects was in the fiscal year 2024 funding cycle. We're electing not to do the project and reprioritizing to be able to get this roof done instead. So between all those projects, the eight in total, this is just over a little bit over a million dollars worth of additional funding that's there, which still leaves us with a bit of a gap. So what we're proposing to do is utilize some of the lottery funding that's available to public schools for repairs. The county had about $1.3 million available. We're proposing an amount not to exceed $398,000 to close the remaining gap, which would leave roughly about a million dollars left in that funding pool. So just to kind of spell out the math a little bit more clearly, cost estimate of almost $2.6 million, the current project funding that we have for 1.1, reality catering, the projects are a little over a million dollars, and an amount of the lottery funds not to exceed just below $400,000 to get us back to the original cost estimate and be able to get this roof project underway. And with that, Mr. Taylor and I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
I want to just ask one quick question on the alternative funding. You said these are projects, the ones that are listed, are completed projects?
Or ones that we've got hard quotes on, and the amounts of the quotes have come in below what we estimated the funding to be.
Okay. All right. And before I turn it over, can I have somebody close the back doors and the side doors? We're getting a lot of noise from the outside hallways.
Thought you were sealing Mr. Taylor and I in.
All right. I'll open it up.
We haven't seen your priorities yet for this year. But I know last year, when we saw them, Northwest Cabarrus and Central Cabarrus High School were two of the tops to be replaced.
Yep.
So we're getting ready to spend $2.5 million on a roof that we're going to just knock the building down in five to 10 years, correct?
So I think, Mr. Taylor, could speak to the structural lottery of the roof being problematic at this point? And I would say that Central Cabarrus replacement is at least 10 years away. I don't think we have 10 years left on this roof. I'm not even sure we have two.
So that's absolutely correct. And honestly, you're probably seven to 10 at best if everything went perfectly. I don't think you're going to have it before 10, and this roof will not last 10 years.
How long does a roof replacement last?
So I plan my strategy for budgeting for them around 15-year life cycles. Now, you're going to hear 20 years from manufacturers on the membrane itself. However, that last five years of that 20, the roof is failing. And normally, you can't find anything that they will actually cover under warranty. So that last five years is pretty insignificant.
Okay. First of all, I despise the fact that we even have a state lottery. We should have never done that. I don't like that kind of corruption. However, since you do have the money and you have this need, and you can't spend it on anything but schools, I'm in favor of the idea of doing that. I have a little bit concerned, though, and I sympathize with you, that you've had recurring problems with the roof and been trying to get ahead of that, I guess, for years. And now you're at the point that, hey, this whole thing needs replacing. I understand that, and that's great. The thing that bothers me is, and you're saying seven to 10 years replacing the school, and yet, replacing the school is a number three priority. If it's going to be seven to 10 years, that puts some other things further off. And to me, I really believe if you're going to go ahead and replace the roof, then replacing the school should be a later priority. Because, I mean, I'm not going to replace my roof and then tear my house down and rebuild it, you know? And so I would like to see the school board maybe raise some other priorities. You need to go ahead and get this done if you're going to have to do it. But I don't think rebuilding the school before you do some other things that need to be done, I don't think that's a good idea after you just replaced the roof, you know? So I hope the school board will consider that. I mean, I have a letter here from, you know, you keep hearing me talk about Midland and wanting to get that school built down there. I know you're tired of it. But I got a letter from Darren Hartzell, Mayor Pro Tem down there, and I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's available if you want to see it. Maybe you've, maybe he sent it to y'all, too. I don't know. If he hasn't, I'm going to encourage him to.
Okay.
Because I think you need to see this for yourself. But he makes a very good case for the fact that Midland's school population, I guess you say, is larger than Mount Pleasant. They already got a new school, you know, two new schools in recent years. And there is a concern about capacity at Central Cabarrus, you know, and some other schools. I think Hickory Ridge is another one that gets kids from Midland. You know, I've talked to some people about if we could even build a smaller-capacity school at Midland, not as big as what you intend it to be eventually, go ahead and at least get that done. That would help some of the capacity at Central Cabarrus and Hickory Ridge by not having those kids from Midland coming up there. So I hope that will get to be a higher priority than it is right now. Just want to let you know that I think that needs to be considered, and I hope somehow you can work that out because they, the Midland project went from seven to nine on a priority list just recently. And here, this is third priority when you got to do this roof replacement. I've also heard it said that can't go right to Midland anytime soon because they haven't been around as long. I think it was 2000, I believe, they were incorporated, if that's correct. Anyway, I know y'all don't mean any harm by that, but to me, it comes across like parents saying, well, you know, we have all these kids, and we just can't take care of the younger ones like we do the older ones. They'll have to wait a while before they get enough food and their own bed and stuff. That's what it sounds like to me and to the people in Midland. So I just wish y'all would consider that. And, you know, as for this project, I think it has to be done right now. I just don't think that you can do this now and keep replacing the school as the third priority. So I'm going to vote for this, but I just wanted to say that first.
Thank you for that. We'll take that feedback back to the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just, so one thing, you mentioned that the budget, that you guys were able to get this extra money from these, the list of these things, you did it based on what the projections of the project were going to cost?
Actually, based on the funding that we were given for each project. And now that the bids have come in for each of those projects, we now can state pretty definitively, now that we've gotten the bids, that the projects are coming in less than what the original budget had cost and the capital budget was going to be.
Just, is there, I'm just concerned, is there a possibility, though, that once we start doing these projects, that any of those things are going to increase?
That's the exact question I asked him today, just to make sure the answer was no, we're in good shape.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We were very careful in selecting the projects that were based in this zone.
Commissioner Pittman, I understand your concerns. It does concern me that we would spend, you know, $2.5 million to replace a roof, and then that is on the, and that school is on the replacement list. However, I hear exactly what you're saying, that there's probably not even two years left on the current roof. I know it's probably in the worst shape of the entire school system. So, you know, I don't know with the new roof, if it's looked at of, could we have a little bit longer life cycle in that building? And I know you're saying that it could be seven to 10 years before we even get into that replacement, and that's a conversation that we can have. But I do know that the roof and ceilings are in very bad shape there, and this is an extreme priority.
They are, or we would not be here right now.
I've seen photos of it, so I understand. All right. All right. Seeing nothing else, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the Department of Human Services. We have Transportation Grant, and we have Charles Radcliffe and Suzanne Moose.
Good evening, Commissioners. I hope everybody's having a good Monday so far. What I have here is Fiscal Year '26, 5310 grant. We've utilized this grant for the last several years. Pardon me if I look down, I've got some points I don't want to miss. So the grant is through the City of Concord, the direct recipient. It's a competitive grant. We have to bid for what we want. It's between us, City of Concord, Rowan County, and City of Salisbury. So the grant is to cover trips for enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. It's a 50% match for the county. What we're asking for this year is $260,000, so that'd be $130,000 on the county. Also, the same grant, we're asking for $25,000 from their capital side. That's an 80-20, so that's $5,000. So the total part the county will be responsible for will be $135,000. So what this is, for FY '26, we're on pace to do over 14,000 trips under this funding. We take folks to devida dialysis, cancer treatments, Cabarrus vocational opportunities, and there's some programs at RCCC where folks with disabilities attend that we take them. Again, it's competitive, so we're asking for this amount. There's not, no guarantee we're going to get that amount. And we came up with a 260, because if you look on, I believe it's page 24, FY '24, we did 13,364 trips. The grant we got that year was $66,182. So the county's cost ended up being $207,461. It's because anything over that grant comes out of general funds from the county. FY '25, we're on track to do 13,681, which, when all said and done, the county will be on the hook for $211,258. So with just increasing the number of trips we do, we were, like I said, estimated to do over 14,000 trips, roughly 14,445. If we get the full 260, it's going to be $130,000 for the county, but in the long run, it would end up saving us roughly $81,000 if we get it. Like I said, the capital side, we're just applying for $25,000, and we'll use that for, like, preventive maintenance on some of our vehicles.
All right. Have any questions, comments from board members?
All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. Next item on our agenda is Department of Social Services, the Seniors Health Insurance Information Program, and we have Tammy Bear and Susan.
Good evening. That is SHIP, we always call it. SHIP is the Senior Health and Insurance Information Program. And the county's actually administered that for 25 years now, so it's been a long time. But tonight, we're talking about an additional $5,600 that we've got in support of shredded events for seniors. So with that, we plan those shred services for different county events that we have scheduled, like we'll do World Elder Abuse Day, which is June. Then we have a scam jam in the fall, and then next year, we hope to do it at the Expo. Didn't get it in time for this year, but next year, we hopefully do that. So it's $5,600, so we've just learned that the exact amount. And with that, due to that, it did, is $1,050 higher than we'd budgeted for. And so that's what we're requesting approval for the budget amendment. And there is no county match, it's 100% funded by the grant. Any questions?
Any questions by board members? All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is Fire Marshal, and it looks like we have two fire district changes, and we have Jacob Thompson.
Good evening, Commissioners. So tonight, we do have, I do have the next two items, both of those being fire district changes. So the first one, and I'll give you a little bit of background. So with our fire districts, there are a couple districts overlaid there. One's a response district, one's an insurance district, and one's a tax district. So when you change one line, you're essentially changing all three. General statute does require those to be done by the commissioners, and it does require there to be a public hearing done prior to those changes being made. And so what we'll be doing tonight is reviewing those potential changes with you, and then essentially, as part of the April regular meeting, due to the time requirement for advertisement of the public hearing, during the April regular meeting, we will have, we'll need to have a public hearing on those prior to a vote. And so that would be adopted as part of the agenda for April. So I do have two, and again, the first item is what I'm calling the Freeman property, so the owners of that, their last number, Freeman. So they did contact our office in order to initiate this. They did have concerns based off of the changes that we made in 2022, based off of the increase in rate going from Flow Store into Harrisburg. And they also had concerns about congruency of their property, so they also own property that is still in Flow Store, and they had concerns about that property being split between two different fire districts. However, also in my review, I did find something that needed to be done as far as a technical change. So when we review these changes, when we do the changes, we look at a map. And so the map that we made the changes off of showed roads that don't exist in reality. And so when we made those changes, reviewing it, it looked like that property was closer to the Harrisburg Fire District. When you pull up the actual GIS mapping and the imagery, you can see those roads don't exist. And so there is a technical change that would need to be made to move them back to Flow Store, which they are closer to. As far as the property, the property is valued at $413,550, $550. Impact to fire departments, so we always want to make sure that that's provided as well. Harrisburg rural is currently at a 15-cent rate. They would see a reduction in approximately 620 and 33 cent a year. And then Flow Store would see an increase in 413.55. So the reason that's difference is different is Flow Store's tax rate is 10 cent versus Harrisburg. So you do have a little bit of difference there, but that will be the effects on those departments. I have made both of those chiefs aware, so they are aware that this was coming before you. Again, no action needed tonight, but just any input that you may have on this particular change.
Any questions or comments?
Okay. Moving on to the.
I still have one comment. Visited at the fire tower down at Midland the other day, and we had a good talk, and I appreciate all the information that they gave me and everything. I think they're doing a good job, and we need to appreciate them for that.
All right. You have the next item.
Yes, sir. So the next one is the Wallace property. So I do know Mr. Wallace is present tonight. So in effect of July 1, 2024, Mr. Wallace had his property, or was able to get his property deannexed from the city of Kannapolis through proper legislative action. So as a part of that, July 1 last year, I received an email notifying me of that deannexation. The problem of that is that on the back end, he is no, he was no longer in a fire district at that time. So I don't know where the breakdown was on that, why we weren't notified that that was occurring. However, immediately on July 1, I went ahead and contacted the fire, or the fire chief in Kannapolis and just made sure that coverage-wise, they were still good, and they were. However, again, based on the need for a technical change before you tonight to move him into a fire district. So in order to make sure that he has the coverage required by insurance, you know, at the beginning, as I mentioned, that when we move a district, we move the insurance district lines as well. And so this would be moving the insurance district lines, fire response lines, as well as the tax district lines over his property, to make sure that he is officially protected, and it's been adopted by ordinance to make that change. So with that being said, his property, congruently, there is two different parcels attached to this. Both parcels, he was, he got deannexed. Both those parcels would be placed into the Kannapolis Rural Fire District. So that total congruent property value is $1,459,590. Kannapolis Rural's tax rate is at 10 cent. That would put them, put the tax contribution to Kannapolis Rural Fire District at $1,459.59. And again, a technical change on that one as well.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is IT, and this is for a budget amendment. I believe you have the next two items.
Yes, sir.
And we have Todd Shanley, head of IT.
Yeah, so this is a technical change for our budget. So when we contracted with Motorola two years ago to implement our new CAD and RMS and JAIL system, we inadvertently moved $750,000 into the 911 account, assuming that that was the best place to pay those funds from. What we've realized through some audits is that that money is showing as a fund balance, so it's impeding our ability to apply for some additional grants. So all this budget amendment does is move that money back out of that account and shows the proper fund balance for the actual 911 funds. So those 911 funds are distributed by the state to us through the 911 surcharge. So that's, that is the technicality of what we're trying to achieve here today.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I believe you have the next item.
So the next budget amendment is for a whopping $195,000, $195 for some peripherals that were purchased. So we run a backup 911 site as well, and at that backup site, we are technically eligible for, to be reimbursed for six positions. But because of the way that we run that site as a backup site for Concord, Kannapolis, and Rowan County, we have built that location to seat eight people. So the state recognizes us as having six, so we pick up the difference for the other two. We submitted those as 911 eligible items, and now we're, this budget amendment shows those funds, those $195 coming out of my IT peripherals account.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Tom. Yep, thanks.
All right. Next item on our agenda is from Risk Management, and we have John Bradley.
Good evening, Commissioners. I come before you tonight to present a budget amendment. We had a deputy who was involved in a automotive wreck back in October, on the 24th of October last year. We just recently received a subrogation payment from the other party's insurance company, and that payment was for $22,445.25. So we would like to move that from our insurance claims account to the Sheriff's Department account, to where they can utilize that funding to purchase a new vehicle. Do you have any questions?
No questions, no comments?
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is approval of the regular meeting agenda. And everyone, take a look at that, and I will entertain a motion for approval of the regular meeting agenda.
So.
All, any discussion, questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General
So.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We're now in closed session. Thank you. All right, we're now back into open session, and I will, first item is to consider appointment of county manager.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to appoint Sean Newton as county manager pursuant to GS 153A-81, effective March 24, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, do we have any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for zero. All right, next item will be the consideration of the employment agreement for the county manager.
All right, and I make a motion pursuant to General Statute 153A-11 to approve the employment agreement between the county and county manager Sean Newton with a salary of $286,500 per year and other such terms, employment benefits, and without cause severance packages, which have been negotiated by the parties, and to authorize the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the same on behalf of the county.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for zero. All right, well, I would like to thank this board throughout this process. We have, you know, been, been going through this for the past couple of months, and Commissioner Wartman and Vice Chair Commissioner Lindsay have really been an integral part of this, not that Commissioner Pittman has not, but these two served on the committee to review multiple dozens of applications. We spent time doing that, and then we also went through interviews.